I caught him off guard. Okay, we're up. Good evening, this is the regular city council meeting of Monday, June 18th, 2018. Would everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
By pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members of council are gonna stand for a moment in silence, you're welcome to join us if you like. Thank you, please be seated. Now the reading glasses. Item number one is... Proclamation recognizing Eagle Scout Nicholas Clark Bradberry, I'm assuming that is you. Come on forward, son. How you doing? Tell everybody what you did for your Eagle Scout. Your project.
I built garden boxes at Westminster Towers retirement home for the citizens there to be able to have something to do with their off time, or their time to give them some fun.
Very good, that's very good. I hope to use those someday, by the way. Let me read this for you real fast. Whereas Nicholas Clark Bradberry has proven himself to be an outstanding and dedicated member of the Boy Scouts of America and Troop 250th 118th Eagle Scout over its thirty-two years as a troop and whereas the Eagle Scout Award is a distinction that will follow Nicholas throughout his life especially exemplifying honor, courage, loyalty, service, and making him a valuable asset wherever he is and Nicholas displayed strong skills while teaching first aid classes to younger scouts as well as developing strength in his orienting skills at Philmont School Scout Ranch and whereas we recognize his Eagle Scout project for the elderly residents at Westminster Towers Retirement Facility in building garden boxes thereby allowing the residents to plant and grow their own fresh vegetables. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and council of the city of Tegucigalay do hereby congratulate and recognize Nicholas Clark Bradberry for his outstanding achievement toward making the rank of Eagle Scout. We are proud to have him as a member of our community, sign this eighteenth day of June, 2018. Get an official photo, is that the official photo? Okay, we got some oaths of office, we got some new firefighters. Can I have my firefighters come forward, I'm gonna guess it's on that side of the room? There you go. I did that with that inhale? So we have... How many firefighters we giving the oath to? Two. Okay, these are two new firefighters that have joined TK Fire Department. We appreciate very much your service to our city and we look forward to having you for several years. At this time of year, both raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Elijah Freeman.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified...
That I am duly qualified.
According to the constitution of this state...
According to the constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties...
To exercise the duties.
Of the office...
Of the office.
To which I've been appointed.
To which I've been appointed.
And that I will...
And that I will.
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof...
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve...
And preserve.
Protect...
Protect.
And defend...
And defend.
The constitution of this state...
The constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
So help me God. Each one of you your votes. You guys can shake your hand and I'll give it to you on the way out. And finally, two new committee members, let's see who they are. Lisa Kennedy and Clint Parker, please come forward. I'm gonna guess you're Lisa. Steel trap.
Guy sharp.
Lisa, and when, what offices are you going to? Going to a committee?
Both forever?
Okay for you. Sorry? Solemnly, both raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified according to the constitution of this state to exercise the duties of the office to which I've been appointed. And that I will, to the best of my ability, discharge the duties thereof and preserve, protect, defend, the constitution of this state and of the United States. Wanna show my brute strength? Okay. Item number two is public comments. I have two people signed up, Terry Hunt, you wanna come first? Please come up to the microphone, state your name and address.
Thank you, my name is Terry Hunt, I live at nine-nine-four Knob Creek Lane in Callaway. I'd like to first paraphrase the late Will Rogers by saying, "All I know is what I read in the newspaper and watch on the video of your council meetings on the website." At the, uh, I noticed in the Fort Mill Times on June sixth, front page, the council had a motion passed unanimously to spend a hundred thousand dollars for one point two acres of land, but it was adjacent to Catawba Park and it's gonna allow you to have a fourth baseball field. I think this was a very bold and decisive decision that you made and a couple of you really got excited about it too. Ever since the concept of Catawba Park came up, I've been in favor of it. My grandkids have come through your rec program, I've seen what goes on with your ball fields. When you get new ball fields in the system like up to elementary school, as soon as the lines go down on the field, it's booked up. So it was a very bold decision you made to increase the number of fields. Now I'd like to remind you, back in the May workshop, the croquet club came and asked for a second croquet court for, at a cost of about a hundred thousand dollars, right beside the existing court. The reasons being, we wanted to increase the number of players, citizens to play croquet because this court, the one court is booked up. A second court will allow more people to come in and play. It'll also allow us to put on bigger and better croquet tournaments. Folks around the southeast region won't drive three or four hours to come in here if it's not a sanctioned tournament. And it's difficult to have a sanctioned tournament on one regulation sized croquet court. So when you go into the budget workshop next month and start talking about the 2019 budget, I'd like y'all to be bold and decisive and maybe get a little excited about voting for a second croquet court. Thank you.
Thanks Terry.
Any comments of...
Anybody got any questions of Terry?
No, I don't have any questions, but thank you Terry.
Thanks Terry. Alright, next on the list is, is that Michael Kemp? Sorry? Okay, please state your name and address.
Michael Kemp, twenty-three eighty-six Vineyard Road. I had the opportunity just last week, um, first of all today I had a chance to speak with Charlie... Funderd, okay? And, um, I had the misfortune of having my daughter last week who was away for college. She came back home for a short stint before she's making her way to New York for bigger and better things. And she was driving a car that was supposed to sit still until daddy came home to put the decal on it and she got pulled over for an expired tag. In the process, she found out that she was driving with a suspended license. The license apparently was suspended sometime between two years ago and to the day in question because of a clerical error. She submitted some documents for change of address, so when she paid a ticket for turning left on a no left-hand turn street, the ticket was paid, she walked away from that situation. A reinstatement fee of some sort was also assessed that she didn't know about, so they sent those documents to the wrong address because they didn't process the change of address form that she had supplied to the court. So with that, and since her arrest and detainment last week Tuesday and then her overnight stay in jail, I became someone who was obsessed with trying to find out how could this happen? She's never had any kind of a record, I'm fifty-three years old, I've never had cuffs on me, never been arrested, never spent any time in jail other than to volunteer. And I do that even for the last three years at the Moss Justice Center, every Thursday. With that though, had the opportunity to hear from Charlie about the construction of the new police department. And I think a, it hit me this afternoon as I was talking to my daughter about what happened. The number of stories that I've heard since last Tuesday about individuals who had paid their fines and then something happened where either the check they wrote was for seventy-nine dollars instead of seventy-seven, so it wasn't processed, or North Carolina didn't inform South Carolina that the ticket was paid and somehow license gets suspended on a fairly regular basis. And even Charlie admitted to it happening to him twenty years ago. And in the twenty years since it's happened, I would think, I would hope that the technology, the database, and the personnel that can process that information so that citizens of this city, of this county, don't have to go through the experience that my daughter, Charlie, and many other folks that I spoke to this week, what they went through. I see that the new jail is on the proposal here in terms of the planning and I think it would be wise that as we considered the fact that there's gonna be a holding facility created at the police department, that another thing to put into the budget would be monies for personnel, monies for the technology necessary for a staff to be able to just get on the computer and be able to see why a license is suspended. We were able to clear it up in less than two hours just by making phone calls to the DMV in Florida. And so I would hate to see anyone else's friend, family members, or what have you, have to go through the process that we went through last week.
Point taken, thank you very much.
Thanks for your input.
Are there any more public comments that somebody wasn't able to sign up? Hearing none, move to item number... Three, approval of minutes. Council, you've read the minutes, are there any additions, deletions, or changes? Hearing none, minutes stand as published. Item number four, new business. Item A is York County Convention Visitors Bureau H tax request. And we have Mr. Billy Dunlop.
Billy had an emergency.
Okay. Please state your name, I'm sorry, I've got Billy Dunlop here, you're obviously Andy.
Andy Clinton, I'm with the Rock Hill York County Convention Visitors Bureau. Sorry, Billy, our president, he could not make it today, so I came in, emergency, so bear with me. I've, uh, I've been with the Visitors Bureau for six years, so I should know this pretty well.
You tell Billy we need a note from his wife of why he missed.
Exactly, so let's see if I can... So, uh, first slide, visit York County, we just recently updated the logo. There on the bottom you see the long name, the Rock Hill slash York County Convention and Visitors Bureau. That's how we used to present ourselves, I'm thankful that we've since then switched it to just visit York County because when I'm going to trade shows and trying to sell business, by the time right after I say Rock Hill slash, they kinda forget about it. So everybody else in our industry, visit Charlotte, visit Greenville, it made sense for us to switch it to visit York County. But essentially, our mission is to create a thriving travel and tourism economy in York County. So that goes from anything like the glamour is the sports events, that's what we thrive on really in the county. So anything from basketball tournaments to football recruiting camps, fishing tournaments, you name it. I actually just met with the water ski team to, they always go to a tournament either in Wisconsin or Florida, so bringing something like that to the area. So you name it, group tours, that's anything from church groups that go to narrowway productions to larger school groups that go to carolins. Really anything and everything, our motive is to try to bring visitors to the area, spend money, and then head back home. So that includes hotels, staying in hotels, and then eating at all of our restaurants. Alright, the report card, what we, uh, what we did this past fiscal year. We brought in fifty-two events and that goes from, like I said, anything from basketball events and football recruiting camps to bringing in corporate meetings that come to our hotels and played our golf courses, eat at our restaurants. It goes, it's a wide variety, church conferences, it's a little bit of everything, a lot is sports. Generated over sixteen point three million dollars of economic impact, ninety-nine thousand room nights, seventy-nine thousand in total attendance, forty thousand brochures distributed. We actually create our own brochures, our visitor guide is our most popular one that we do each year and it highlights, it goes by each city, so Rock Hill, Fort Mill, Tegucigalay, York, Clover, and also highlights more so the locally owned restaurants. You know, we can't include every restaurant or the visitor guide would be pretty large, but mainly the locally owned restaurants that we include. The forty-eight stories published, that goes from anything from articles on websites to magazine articles. Anything, if you guys have heard of Pucker Butt, that's, uh, that's been a popular one that's hit some of these articles.
He's a Tegucigalay resident, by the way.
Do what?
He's a Tegucigalay resident.
Alright, so a little bit of everything. And then what's, what's new for 2018, 2019, a popular one is our mobile visitor center. So as of right now, I can skip down to the second one, our new visitor center. We're actually in downtown Rock Hill, which is a good location for us, we receive a lot of traffic. We were in the Baxter Hood Center, which is off of Anderson Road, we really didn't see a lot of traffic off of that site. I'm glad in the position where we are now, but our plan with the new mobile visitor center is that's basically gonna be a visitor center van. So we're gonna have visitor information, depending on the event, we'll have different trinket items, we might have bottled waters. We really haven't gone too much into detail, but the main thing is we're gonna have a visitor center that's gonna be on wheels. So essentially when somebody has a Christmas parade or a Fourth of July event or a large basketball event, we're going to take the visitor center there just because we know, you know, we're located in downtown Rock Hill, but we want to make it to all of our areas, we represent the entire county, so that way this will do that for us. We're extremely excited about that, about that, county council's very excited about that as well. I just discussed the, on the earlier slide, the slide, the name change to visit York County. We also have eighteen new events coming in the area. Once again, that ranges, a lot of basketball events, football events, three new fishing tournaments. So really that goes across the field as far as what all we've done. And then agritourism, that goes into some of our farms, that's a big thing now as far as farm to table and a lot of these farms are getting a lot of notice and as far as somebody going out there to visit. So agritourism is, is a big thing in our area. Alright, services currently offered to Tegucigalay. Visibility and fifteen brochures distributed to forty thousand visitors annually. Like I said, the main one is our visitors guide, that's when somebody's relocating to the area or just looking to visit, that has the top things to do in the area, restaurants, that's the big one. Another one that I just recently updated is our new meeting facilities guide. And that's again where, you know, we're selling to bring in corporate business or bring in meetings, bring in a church conference. That meeting facilities guide, it really showcases each facility that we have in the area, whether that's Winthrop University, the Glennon Centers in there, you know, all of our, all of our facilities that can handle, you know, a meeting of fifty people or of a hundred, we list the square footage. We also have maps of each municipality. The map of Tegucigalay highlights the different areas and attractions, it's really, it's a good map, it's a tear-off map where it lists the main roads and then different points of interest, so it's pretty easy to follow. And then the promotion of our events, attractions, restaurants on social media, the Visit York County app, and then visityorkcounty.com. So, uh, yeah, we push a lot of our events and even if there's not an event going on, we'll promote a specific attraction or a specific restaurant through all of our social media platforms. I'm not the social media guru, but we thankfully have somebody on staff that, uh, she's done an excellent job with Facebook and I wanna say that we're right around twenty thousand followers, which is pretty significant considering the size of our area and then you look at other areas such as Charlotte or Greenville and we actually stack up relatively well as far as our social media platforms. Alright, services kinda continued on, so story pitches, local, regional, national media to include the Fourth of July celebration that you guys do, the boat parade, and then the Carolina ski show team out at Windjammer Park. So we actively promote those events as well as everybody throughout the entire county, but we do that specifically for you guys. We represent Tegucigalay's unique twenty-seven hole championship course and then we also represent its Mountains and Midlands Golf Alliance, that's essentially a tag team of two guys that we pay them to go to different golf trade shows. It's, uh, it's, they essentially get corp, uh, corporate accounts to fly in from Canada, from New York to play at all of our different golf courses in the area, so that's worked out very well. His numbers actually produce significant for all of our golf courses in the area. So it's definitely beneficial to not only you guys, but the entire county. And then, uh, I have a feeling you guys are all familiar with the Game On Project.
We've heard about it.
So, uh, so that's one that we've been in pretty constant contact with them as process, you know, the process moves on with the Game On facility. The plan is for us to have a visitor center inside the Game On facility. And then, uh, as you create these sports venues, you do have to have the, the marketing side of it, which that's where we come into play. You know, we don't own any facilities, we're a marketing branch, so that's where we come into play to all my contacts for, whether it's tennis, or basketball, or volleyball, wrestling, you name it, I essentially try to fill the place up on the weekends. So, uh, we've been working with him quite a bit as far as, uh, as being that, that main lead for the sports tourism, for the Game On facility. Alright, while I'm here, update on what we were doing in Tegucigalay. Give you guys kind of a brief of, you know, what we're already doing for, for you guys as far as marketing you guys. Trying to put you guys out to, out there is when we bring events and bring tourism to the area that we're trying to tout you guys as much as possible. An update on the Visit York County funding as far as where it comes from, where it's generated, and, uh, and our goal as far as the municipality funding. This is where Billy's a little bit better at this than I am, but, uh, so eighty-seven percent of our budget comes from York County on the unincorporated area, and you can see that there. Seven percent comes from Rock Hill, one percent comes from Fort Mill, and then five percent comes from grants. Typically, SCPRT is the main one that we go through for, for the grants. So essentially what we're trying to do is we're trying to get a buy-in from all the municipalities. Obviously, we have a large chunk of buy-in from York County unincorporated, but it does make sense when we are trying to promote all the, all the cities and, uh, in the incorporated area that we try to obtain funding from, from everyone. So that's, uh, that's essentially what Billy is trying to do. He's been here for six months and, uh, I, I think it, you know, absolutely makes sense as far as our funding. We, we try to represent the entire county, we don't wanna leave anybody out, but it does make sense that in that process we do get funding from, from everyone as well and you can kinda see where we are and we've, he's also made the request to the other municipalities as well.
And what was that total number funded?
Our, our total budget currently right now...
Yeah.
Is one point three million, that's what makes up the entire pie. So the request for the H tax funding, Visit York County is requesting ten percent of your H tax funding to serve as a partner with Tegucigalay to provide marketing, promotion, events, and exposure to the city. So that's, uh, that's basically the request that we're, that we're asking as far as almost a buy-in from you guys that we're, we're, uh, we're willing to keep on doing what we're doing, but, uh, but really kinda create that partnership and bond not only with York County unincorporated, but all the municipalities as well. So, uh, what Visit York County will provide, funding back into Tegucigalay, bring more events, bring more leisure travel, increase marketing, increase exposure, promote your events, attractions, restaurants. A main one is more events to the Glennon Center, I actually just met with Kristen and John actually with the Glennon Center. That's definitely something on our list to, you know, in regards to funding for you guys, we definitely want to make that a part of the plan. The mobile visitor center, like I, I said earlier, you know, it'd be great to, whatever events you guys think would be great to have the mobile visitor center, that's where we would put it, and then obviously the, the social media is a critical part for us as well. Alright, and then tourism creates dollars, I mean essentially our plan is to bring in more visitors, get more people to stay in hotels and eat at our restaurants to therefore increase the H tax even more. So that's, that's ultimately our plan in doing this and, uh, hopefully we kinda get the, the buy-in from the municipalities to even, you know, our plan is whatever we get from each municipality, we want to put that right back towards that municipality, if that makes sense.
Are you able to track like that, you know, you're asking for ten percent, but as far as for ten percent of growth in tourism for the city, is that something that you could track and be able to say, hey, here's a return on your investment, we brought X amount?
Exactly, that's, that's exactly what we're... That's, that's exactly what we're trying to do. And other municipalities have...
Well, how would you track it, I guess, is my question?
So, I mean, specifically for, for events, I mean, that would, that would be the main, main way that we would be able to track it. Now, you know, your, your average couple that, you know, comes off the interstate just because we, we place an ad, you know, some of those things aren't going to be able to, you know, they're not measurable. But the things that we will be able to measure are, you know, we brought a corporate meeting where I had four hundred people go to the Glennon Center and then, you know, fifty of them went and played golf. I mean, that's, that's the kind of tracker, trackable measurables that we would try to, uh, to bring for you guys. I mean, really, uh, event-driven. You know, obviously, social media is advan- it's as advanced as it is right now. I mean, when we put up posts just for, you know, y'all's Fourth of, uh, Fourth of July event, how many shares, how many likes, all that's, all that's trackable now. So, um, we'd essentially give, you know, a packet to each municipality after the fact as far as there's your ROI. I mean, that's, that's critical to us. That's how we're, you know, essentially the money that we're given, we want that return on investment to be much, much greater. So, does that make sense that somewhat answered your question?
Yep.
All right, in conclusion, uh, the H-Tax funding for Visit York County means, uh, more marketing for Tegu K, more exposure for Tegu K, more events to Tegu K, and then, uh, more promotions to Tegu K, which, um, in essence equals, you know, more H-Tax funding. That's, that's ultimately our plan is to generate more H-Tax funding for you guys, so...
Well, that's the way we can track it easily. What's the H-Tax we've got from last year?
Exactly. I mean, hopefully, the following year, that, that H-Tax funding, uh, increases. So that's ultimately the, uh, that's, that's the plan. That's the goal.
So we offer double your money back?
Yeah. That's it for me, uh, any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I just noticed, um, your, your prior logo was Rock Hill York County. And you just asked us, I know you're changing to, to Visit York County, but you just asked us for more than twice as much as Fort Mill's contributing. I, I thought the, I thought the ask was going to be...
I think you said one percent of his budget, of their budget, comes from Fort Mill.
One percent of...
Their budget.
Yeah.
One percent of your budget.
So I think he's asking ten percent for each city, right?
It's ten percent.
That adds up to one percent of their budget.
Ten percent of your H-Tax.
Which is twice as much as Fort Mill's contributing.
No, 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 no.
No.
One percent of their overall budget, uh, one percent of their overall budget comes from Fort Mill. They're asking every city to do ten percent of their own H-Tax. So for us, ten percent projected for next year, if council were inclined to do this, with the approval of the budget, would be twenty-six thousand four hundred dollars. Ten percent of Fort Mill's H-Tax, they're probably collecting, what, seven fifty or better?
Yeah, it's, uh...
So their, their ten percent is probably going to be two, three times more than what our ten percent would be, if that makes sense.
Correct. And once again, Bill, Billy is the one, but I, I believe each municipality is, is roughly about the same. We're not asking, you know, more from you guys than anybody else. That clearly wouldn't, wouldn't make sense, but...
Do you have any copies of, like, the, the brochures or any of that material that, that you produce? That we could see?
You can blame that one on Billy. I was leaving the office and I, and I was, and I gave him a call and I was like, you know, do you think I should? I had, should I get the meeting facilities guides and the visitor guides? And, uh, and I actually don't tell him that because he, he doesn't like that. I'm calling him out. But, uh, uh, I was debating about bringing those, uh, and the maps and everything, but... Yeah, I, I was going to say, I'm pretty sure all of us have spoken with you guys as well and probably, um, I'm sure you guys...
If there's anything to take away, tell them to take Windjammer Park out of those brochures. Anybody else have a question? Okay, Andy, thanks a lot.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Okay, four B. Kathy is going to come talk to us about updating the planning commission. Kathy Masters.
Hey there. Kathy Masters, four seven two, point clear. The purpose of this talk each month is just to, um, approve communication, establish strategic direction, get some guidance from you guys, let you know what we're working on. Current priority work items include the impact fee, which we're waiting at this point, waiting for the study recommendation. We're discussing setback buffers and density. There are specific issues identified. Right now, it's discussion. A recommendation is expected to counsel sometime in the summer of two thousand eighteen. We are, let's see, sorry, Chris's notes. Establish starting point checklist for PDD discussions and negotiations. We're hoping to give staff a little bit more instructions on what to talk to developers about certain things that we want to see on the front end, um, lower density, larger lot sizes, setback, street ownership, private trails, amenities, those types of things. We continue to work on the bike pedestrian master plan. The, um, we've completed a survey of all existing trails. The final draft of the map with existing approved and in-process and desired connections has been completed.